This regular meeting of the NACADOTCHAS Independent School District Board of Trustees, let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that notice of this meeting has been legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Please remember that items don't have to be taken in the order shown on the agenda and join us in turning your cell phones either off or to a silent mode. At this time, we're going to ask if you would excuse yourselves for a Level 3 hearing. At this time, please. Mrs...
The time is six twenty-three. We're going to ask if Mr. Green would give us our implication.
All right. Gentlemen, Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that we've had today. We thank you most of all for these students that we have in NISD. And the wonderful staff and all the teachers that diligently work with them every day. We also pray for your hand coming upon this district to give the leaders and the teachers within those classrooms the right kind of wisdom, the wisdom to make solid decisions. Pray that you'll be with this board tonight as we make decisions. And we always keep in mind that what we do is for the betterment of the district and the betterment of the students of NISD. These things we ask, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now we'll call on Mr. Mulligan to come and introduce the McMichael Middle School students that will lead us in the pledges to our flags.
Good evening, President Irvin, Board members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. I wanted to, we're going to have some students come in here in just a second from McMichael. This is a group, I'm not going to say too much about them other than you'll see when they're going to come in, and they're going to do it a little different than what we more normally have seen. But this is a group that has been a part of our school now for, going since about February. And Ms. Knight, Ms. Rindy Knight, is going to tell you a little bit about it. And this was, started off, was the brainchild of Mr. Lex Harwell, who's standing back there in the corner, so, but Ms. Knight will come up and tell us a little bit about it.
Good evening, President Irvin, Board members, Interim Superintendent Fraley. We have a set of ten boys, they're part of our Spartan program at McMichael, and they're going to come up and say our pledges. They're led by their Corporal Braden Taylor, this Private Cameron Hamilton, Private Hayden Cooper, Private Ishmael Chamvilla, Private Joel De La Cruz, Private Kendrian Blakely, Private Uziel Victorio, Private Zolin Skinner, Private Nicholas Rocha, and Private Gerardo Garcia. Please rise for the pledges.
With the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, our religion is to be Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You may have a seat. Thank you for inviting us here today. I would like to give you an overview about what the Spartan program is all about. The Spartan program, similar to ROTC, is for non-traditional students who struggle to function properly in a classroom environment. These students are not forced to join, but are invited to join, and it instills in them honor, discipline, and brotherhood. They are taught to respect the flag, our soldiers, and the fundamentals of democracy. Students are able to work together to form close bonds, and because of these bonds, students are better behaved, have less classroom issues, and have a better attitude about the complex world they live in today. There are two commanders who play an active role in the students' behavior, as well as squads of peers that encourage honor and self-discipline. The students also carry special ID tags that identify them as Spartans. At any time, a teacher can remove this ID and send it to us. When they enter the Spartan class at the end of the day, the platoon of Spartans have to address the issue together. This program, which is free, is a true positive behavior intervention system that will leave the students with something they can use later in life. Best of all, it was developed by teachers here at McMichael Middle School. Thank you.
So, parents of our Spartans that are here, and family members of the Spartans that are here, would y'all please stand? So, I know it was done a little bit different, normally we haven't time for pictures and all that, so, Mr. Harwell's told all the guys, okay, we're going to have pictures, and we're going to have them out there. So, if y'all want to go out and have pictures with the whole group, and get them to do that, that would be awesome. So, if y'all want to go ahead and dismiss and do that, that would be great. All right? So, thank y'all.
Thank you so much. The board met earlier in closed session, is there any action at this time?
Mr. President, I would, in regard to item 10A, I would move to deny the grievance and uphold the reassignment.
Mr. President, I second the motion.
It was moved and seconded and discussed. Those in favor, show by the right hand. And then we had two to recuse themselves, Mr. Smith and Mr. Fosh. Thank you. We come now to the recognition. This board meeting is an opportunity to recognize our students, staff, volunteers, and community partners, and we'll call on Mr. Les Lindberger to begin tonight's recognition.
Thank you, President Irvin, Board members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. Last month, we started what will become a series of recognitions of groups and individuals that volunteer their time for the benefit of Nacogdoches ISD. Tonight, we're going to hear from McMichael Middle School Principal Tim Mulligan once more. He's on hand to introduce representatives of the Mosaic Church. Mr. Mulligan will describe how the church is helping out at his campus. Tim, come on up here.
Good evening again. Back in the spring, we had an opportunity, or a church that was without a building, had an opportunity, and approached the district to see about renting the facilities on Sundays. And so, they were looking at the facilities in the district, and they looked at McMichael. And it was approved by the board, and so, Mosaic Church moved in in the spring of this past year. And one of the things that the group wanted to make sure that they had done was, it was not just about building, it was not just about coming in and using a facility. They had a desire to give back, more than just their, part of their money to give back to the district by paying for their, paying for the electricity, paying for the air, paying for the usage, paying for custodians, paying for the fact, the wear and tear of the building. They wanted to give back by giving their time and any other resources that they had that McMichael might need. And so, along with several of the leaders there, they came to talk to me and said, what are some things that we need? And so, before I kind of say any of that, I'd like to, for any of the representatives from Mosaic, if y'all would come on up here to the front and just be recognized by our community. Yeah. Terrell, will you take this mic and introduce, or have everybody introduce themselves?
Yeah, good evening. I'll just run through this real quick. This is Paul Hagler, he's one of our elders. John Jackson, he leads worship for us. Emily Dodson does graphic design, a lot of the creativity stuff. Josh Evans is also one of our elders, and his wife, Emily Evans, runs the children's ministry for us. Avira's one of our volunteers, and Jamal does youth student ministry for us at Mosaic.
So, how Mosaic has helped us is that, first of all, they came at the beginning of the year, and they had just a, they wanted to let the teachers know and the students know that they were going to be thinking about them, and they were going to be praying for them, but that they were just in their corner, that they wanted to know that they were being recognized for the hard work that they were doing. And so, the church organized a thing where they had cards, where they got the names of every single employee, cafeteria worker, custodians, secretaries, nurses, teachers, counselors, everybody. And everybody received a card just wishing us the best to start the year. And then they've gone through, they, we have what's called an after-school group that happens on Tuesdays and Thursdays, where it started off small, we'd have four kids, there's no strings attached, you just want to stay, hang out, we'll have a little time to work on tutoring if we need to work on some schoolwork, but we also have the opportunity just to get to know each other. And for some of these volunteers, and Jamal, and then Emily's husband, who isn't here, is Joe, I imagine he's home taking care of, okay, yeah. Joe have come into the school and brought volunteers, like Avira, who have come up and are just loving on the kids, and spending time with them. And this started off, we had, I don't know, two or three, and that right Miss Schaefer for four, something like that, and now today, we had 21 kids that just wanted to stay after school, just to hang out with them. Those kind of things. Then we had, we've had opportunities where we've needed some items bought for some reviews so that the kids had rewards for working really hard for their star reviews. And so, the church purchased, I said, we have a need, and they said, what do you need? We said, well, we need some things like pens, pencils, basketballs, footballs, stuff like that, these kids, that they get rewards for working hard at the end of the day, that they can come in and choose these rewards. So, they have provided those for us. Then they've also come through, and we needed some, a thing called Swivel, which is a thing for teachers to improve their quality of teaching by having, it's a setup where an iPad gets put on it, the teacher wears what's called a marker, the teacher's teaching around the room, and the Swivel is just tracking their motion. And so, that they are going, and teachers can then go back and watch what they've been doing in class so that they can learn. And the church provided two of those for us. So, these are the type of partnerships that they are giving their time, a little financial, but the biggest thing is that they're giving their hearts and their time to McMichael, and we just, it's going to continue in the next year, and we're just really excited. So, I just wanted to say thank you to guys, and I know we've got several of our teachers here, so, thank you, guys. Hey, can I get the teachers up here too, to get in there with them? All right, y'all come up, all my McMichael people, y'all come up here too. They're also going to Carpenter and working with the kids and hanging out and leading at Carpenter as well, so, that's just a really good group.
There we go.
I forgot also that they also, they needed, they used the gym for their worship service, and we had a drop-down screen that was probably eight by eight feet, and when you have, I think, what are we having, 600 people come in service? Okay, well, okay, 400? Okay, 500? And so, the eight by eight, and so, they were able to, they were able to get a screen that I think is 24 feet wide, and I think is 16 feet long, and bought it, and they said, we're going to permanently mount it. And so, whenever they decide to move and decide to buy, build their own building, and they said, but this is going to stay with y'all, so, that's something else that they've done.
Thank you.
Well, we've got some more special guests here with us tonight. We have nine of our 11 teachers that were selected as Campus Teachers of the Year. Two of them had things they could not get out of tonight and will not be here, as well as our two District Teachers of the Year. It's important to note, there are wonderful teachers in Nacogdoches ISD. Every campus I go to, that's what I see. And as a personal note here, my mother-in-law retired after nearly 40 years in the classroom in the town she lives in. And you don't go to the grocery store with her unless you want to commit three hours, because she has either taught them, taught their kids, or in some cases, both, or was almost ready to teach their grandchildren. So, I see what that impact looks like 40 years down the road. And I don't know that you can overstate the importance of the role teachers play in the lives of these children. lives of these children. But I see them every week here in NAC when I'm out on their campuses, and I can honestly say that we're blessed with wonderful teachers in this district. And I know that selecting one from each campus is a challenge, just as it was a challenge to select District-Wide Teachers of the Year. But I'm going to go ahead and bring them up here, and when I call your name, teachers, come on up here to the front. Kylie Altier from Brooks Quinn Jones Elementary School. And once you get up here, you need to stay as well. Michael Moore from Emmeline Carpenter Elementary School. Felicia Mark from Fredonia Elementary School. Claire Murphy from Nettie Marshall Academy of Dual Language. Stacy Adkins from Reggae Elementary School. Jamie Kabinus from Thomas J. Rusk Elementary School. Lex Harwell from McMichael Middle School. Jody Franks from Mike Moses Middle School. And Anna Lee Segura from Nacogdoches High School. Now, two others, Matthew Higgins from Malcolm Rector Technical High School, and Michael Cavell from Nacogdoches County DAEP. They're the two that could not be here tonight. But please, join me in applauding these wonderful teachers who represent the best of both the Now, we have a couple of more awards to hand out. From these 11, two were selected as Nacogdoches ISD Teachers of the Year. That's Kylie Altier of Brooks Quinn Jones, who is our Elementary Teacher of the Year. And Jody Franks is our Secondary Teacher of the Year. Thank you all so much for coming up here tonight. We could not be more proud of you for this honor, and also for what you do for our children in this school district. Thank you very much.
Can we take a picture with them?
Absolutely, Board President.
And Mr. President, as we're walking down, I just want to say, I know these guys don't hear it enough. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Hey, before the, can I say something? Before those teachers leave, one thing that popped into my head when I was sitting there watching this, we choose the Teachers of the Year every year from the group that has nominated that year. And then, the tendency for the principal the next year is to find new faces. Well, some of these people that got, didn't get Teacher of the Year this year might be a good candidate for Teacher of the Year for the next year. So, we'll need to rethink how we nominate some of these teachers, as far as giving those people that didn't get it this year an opportunity to get Teacher of the Year next year.
Well, we have one more recognition tonight. This is Steve Green's final Board of Trustees meeting before next month's election. Steve's not seeking reelection, and we'd like to take this opportunity to thank him and recognize his contributions, many of which started well before he joined this board. And Steve, you might as well start heading this way. Steve has served on Nacogdoches ISD's Board of Trustees for two terms after first being elected in 2012. As a board member, Steve has filled all three officers' roles, secretary, vice president, and president, and along the way, playing a key role in overseeing this school district. But Steve's service to Nacogdoches ISD goes well beyond the last six years. He was a teacher at Emmeline Carpenter Elementary School and Thomas J. Rusk, before becoming an assistant principal at TJR, where he eventually took over as principal and led that campus for 17 years. Steve then spent another 12 years as principal at Mike Moses Middle School before retiring. I think it's safe to say Steve Green has committed his life to Nacogdoches ISD. Please join me in thanking him tonight.
Unless you forgot to mention, it all started with him being a bus driver. We come now to the information and reports, and we give it now to Mr. Apple Frey.
Thank you, President Irvin and members of the board. I want to first talk about the volunteers again, and how much we really need to really appreciate the role they play and what they do, the service they provide. I've met many of them on campus visits, met several today as well, and they really are a secret sauce. They make a huge difference in the success of our school system, and they do a great job for our community as well. So, I want to thank all the churches, the civic organizations, various clubs, individuals as well, for what they do for our boys and girls and the school system. Monday was the highlight of my week, not only the first day, but I got the chance to go and read to third-grade students at Thomas J. Rusk Elementary School as part of the Texas Reads One Book. This is an initiative that's really headed up by Jason Garrett, head coach of Dallas Cowboys, go Cowboys, and Texans. But I love the blue orders.
Go Cowboys.
And it's all about creating a culture of literacy in every home and every community, and really throughout our entire state. And so, in our third-grade classrooms, they all heard us read to them the first chapter of the book, The Mouse and the Motorcycle. We had a lot of fun. This Saturday, next Saturday, 28th, we'll have a job fair at McMichael Middle School. We'll be asking more folks to join our team, and we're excited about that as well. We'll talk about the benefits of joining our team and the fact that we're on the move. We're on the move. As we move toward the end of April, this is our homestretch, you know, a lot of things happening at our schools, lots of activities, we'll have lots of banquets, lots of programs, lots of handshaking and grinning, but it's all because our kids deserve, they deserve the recognition. We'll have the seniors council assembly in the auditorium at 9:00 a.m. June 1, and graduation will be 6:30 Friday, June 8 at the Coliseum at SFA. And between now and then, a lot of things are taking place. And, boys and girls, summer school, and we're excited about that. Parents are very excited about that. That will start June 11, and most will wrap up by the end of June, although some programs for the pre-K English language learning will extend into July. We'll have summer camps at Fredonia Carpenter, and they'll stretch into July as well. Some of these classes will take place at Brooks Quinn, Jones, McMichael, and the high school, and summer camp at Fredonia Carpenter will extend into July, and Fredonia's camp will be held at Nettie Marshall because of HVC worked in Fredonia. So, I'm continuing with my tour of the district, I'll be visiting all facilities tomorrow. And I will say this, from my first accepted position, I had a lot of hope. Since I've been here, I have a lot of optimism as well. We have a lot of great things to talk about. We have a great story to tell. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Fraley. Ms. Ivy, the 2018 graduation projections.
Good evening, President Irvin, Board Members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. I have the pleasure tonight of explaining this, this, I'm sorry, I have the pleasure of explaining this report since Dr. O'Gwynn is celebrating his 28th wedding anniversary tonight, so I would have the pleasure of coming up and helping him out. Congratulations to him. All right, we have approximately at Nacogdoches High School, 345 seniors at this time. We have also 34 seniors who are currently working toward graduation through our individual graduation plan. That is through Senate Bill 149 that the legislature adopted in 2014-15. And so, those students are in, are working on projects and portfolios in order to complete projects in case they are not as successful with the end-of-course exams. Senate Bill 49 covers those students who have one or two course exams if they have not passed. So, we've had the students preparing for that, the parents have met, we've got a lot of things going on with that, and we expect some great successes. We had English 1 and 2 exams were given April 10th and 12th. We have, in May, we have our Algebraology and U.S. History, and we hope that everyone who's participating in these exams will pass, but we expect our graduation rate to still be high based on that, on this, on their work. You have any questions?
What was the number of high school graduates?
We have 345 at Nacogdoches, seniors at Nacogdoches High School. I don't know if I said the word senior, but I meant to say seniors, yes. Also, at Malcolm Rector High School, they have approximately 35 seniors. They've had 12 who have completed their projects or portfolio, along with all of their coursework, and were able to graduate. And we're expecting about 15 more to be able to complete theirs successfully as well. Thank you.
English 2s, don't worry about it. Ms. Kinsley, CBA Benchmark Report.
Good evening, President Irvin, Board Members, Superintendent Fraley. Tonight, I, for our monthly, Lone Star Governor's Monthly Monitoring Meeting, I am going to show you data that addresses Goal Performance Measure 2.1. The gap between the percentage of district African-American students and the percentage for the highest-performing student group meeting the state minimum size criteria who demonstrate proficiency owner above curriculum-based assessments for reading will decrease from 33% to 20% by the end of 2021. I don't know, maybe the battery went dead less, you might, can you go to the next slide? Okay. Yeah, go back one slide. So, this data just compares with third grade, we don't have STAR data to compare because they're first-time STAR takers, so they have last year's benchmark to this year's benchmark. The other grades show the benchmark to STAR comparison, and then, we're looking at student growth, either limited growth, expected growth, or accelerated growth. And those, the two, expected growth and accelerated growth are the total growth the students make. Okay, next slide. All right, here's our third grade. The 53%, the reading that's 53% is the approaches grade level that was set by the state last year. We don't know this year what the state will be setting it at. The 72% line shows the meets. And compared to last year's benchmark to this year's benchmark, you see the growth of our third graders by student groups. So, our focus tonight is looking at our African-American students, and they made an 8% gain over last year's students on the STAR. They're already there, so hopefully, by the time they get to the STAR, we'll see even more gains. They test in May. Fourth grade, you know, we're seeing significant growth. The African-American group students grew by 6% compared to the Hispanic by 19%, which was a significant gain, and our all-students group gained by 13%. Fifth grade, fifth grade, our African-American groups made significant gains with a 16-point gain there. That's, you know, a very good gain for one year based on where they scored last year on the STAR test to where they have on the benchmark this year. So, we're looking forward to those gains. Sixth grade, as they move to middle school, the gains drop a little bit. You know, sixth graders are dealing with a lot of transition, the text becomes harder, but they are making gains. You can see across the board, they made 3% to 4% gains over last year's test. Okay, our seventh grade, they exceed the growth, but the gap should still be closed a little bit further with our African-Americans showing a 9%. They actually outperformed the growth of our Hispanic all-students groups also. They're right equal with the white students who made about the same amount of growth as they did. Eighth grade, this is our SSI grade. It looks like we've had a little dip here, but with SSI, we have two, they'll have three opportunities to take the test, the first and second one. The first test they took back in the beginning of April. When their scores come in, our eighth graders will be put in intervention groups for students' success initiatives. Our fifth and eighth graders will receive 10-to-1 instruction with 10 students. They go into a smaller group, and we're hoping to see bigger gains on that when the scores come in. Okay, now, the high school scores, they're a little bit deceiving in a way, it's sort of hard to figure out. We had our benchmark test earlier this year. The teachers have been working really hard, they feel very confident with English, but the scores across the groups don't reflect that. Because they did, they had their benchmark earlier in the year, we're also, last year, they changed the design of the STAR test, so there was quite a few variables, and you'll see, all the groups look like they decreased, but if you look at the data with the teachers, the teachers feel like the kids are making significant gains. English 2, the same thing. Okay, so, they took those tests back in December instead of in the spring, and that sort of changed our comparison group there. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we come now to the Board Member Continuing Education Status, and at this time, all the board members have met or exceeded all training requirements. Thank you so much. Now, to our public comments, section of the board meeting, individuals wishing to address the board should have already completed a form located on the table by the entrance of the door and turned it in prior to the meeting. Comments will be kept to a maximum of three minutes. Groups five or more, individuals having the same concern, shall have a single spokesperson for the group. The board reminds speakers that this open forum is not the time or place to bring the board complaints about a particular program or a particular employee. The board has adopted specific complaint policies and specific procedures for presenting those complaints. The board cannot respond to comments in this open forum, but can inform you of policies, complaint procedures that are available under board policy. Forum will be considered on a first come, first served basis, and if speakers need to address the board from the podium. It's important that the board members hear our speakers tonight accordingly. Please withhold applauses or any action that would be disruptive to the process. The total time allotted... to the process. The total time allotted for this portion of the meeting is 30 minutes. Mr. Martin will keep time for us. And now, I'll call one of my favorite persons, Mr. Z.
(applause) I'm a long guy, people. I apologize. Here we go. Good evening, President Irvin, board members, and interim Superintendent Fraley. My name is Charles Amannick, and, but everybody just calls me Z. I have the pleasure of teaching eighth and sixth grade science while also serving as our department head at McMichael Middle School. This week has been busy not just at McMichael, but across the district as we celebrate our successes and prepare for upcoming state assessments. In sixth grade, our students have been investigating the theory of plate tectonics. Students circulated the room as they engaged in task cards. These cards required our students to think critically, collaborate with their peers, and push their creativity to the limits. We have digitally invited our parents to the classroom through Class Dojo. Teachers, parents, and students are all able to access the cool things going on in our science classrooms at the click of a button. Thanks to the work of our sixth-grade super team, especially Mr. Harwell, who brought us the idea, 61% of our parents are now connected and actively participating in our learning environment. This year, April showers will bring our seventh-grade students May flowers, not to be confused, of course, with the May flower that brought the pilgrims to the continent in 1620. These are actual flowers we're talking about, because we are currently in the process of utilizing our box gardens to show students the process of plant germination. In time, we hope to replicate the crossbreeding of pea plants, just as Gregor Mendel did centuries ago. This year, we'll be hosting a science showcase. The theme for the showcase revolves around the body systems. We hope to push students to pursue excellence in research by providing a structured but flexible learning environment. We'll be meeting Monday to discuss more details. We hope to see our upcoming sixth graders, community members, board members, as we show our skills. If we had, if I had to describe our eighth graders in one word, it would be perseverance. These students have persevered through so much this year, whether it be their social-emotional development as we prepare them for high school, or their stamina and motivation to perform on numerous assessments. Our eighth-grade science teachers have volunteered to pull kids during their conference for small group, and our internal data shows us that our kids are demonstrating growth one step at a time. We are currently going through a period of intensive intervention and goal-setting. We don't just want our students to just pass the grade level. We want them to master our grade level. Due to this mentality, all of our students need just a little extra push to move into that next performance category. Our teachers have worked vigorously this year to see our students reach their fullest potential. Yesterday, I was able to visit Carpenter-Fredonia Elementary Schools. These are two of our feeder schools I've been working with this year to provide science support. Not that they needed my help. Their teachers and students are doing some really amazing things. I love getting on those campuses because those are my kids. They may not be at my school yet, but they will be one day in the halls of McMichael. If you ever want to smile, volunteer to work at one of our elementary campuses, because there is never a slow day there. I want to make note of something, however, before I go. My typical workday is from 5:00 in the morning to 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night. What is crazy to me is that I am almost never the first one on my campus, nor am I the last one to leave. We love our students enough to work 14-hour days. I ask that, as we get closer to the end of the school year, that you find a teacher and thank them for their hard work, because in education, my work schedule's not the exception. It is the norm. We work countless hours to provide our students with a transformative experiment, experience, and that work doesn't stop when we leave the school. I can't tell you the number of times that I've stayed up at night concerned for my students' well-being, or the number of late-night phone calls from my fellow teachers as we collaborate on the best course of action. Believe it or not, a thank you goes a long way. Thank you to the board, Superintendent Fraley, and community for all that you do to support us educators. Together, we can change the future. I promise you that the leaders of tomorrow are sitting in our classrooms, as scary as that might be, but we hope that you can help us prepare them for tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Z. We now call Ms. Michelle Pick.
Good evening, President Irvin, oh, President Irvin, board members, and interim Superintendent Fraley, Mr. Fraley. As a parent and a member of our vibrant community, I really want to see our schools succeed. We've seen a lot of transition in the superintendent role, and we'll soon see transition on our board. And the First Lady of Racing, Louise Smith, has a quote that I just adore. She said, "You can't reach for anything new if your hands are still full of yesterday's junk." Well, I know that we've all inherited some midpoint goals established by previous administrations, and a new board will undoubtedly inherit some cleanup work left by this particular team of eight. And I think it's important that we clean up that junk. We get rid of that junk, because we are really poised for growth here at Nacogdoches ISD. One little piece of junk that I know many members of the board have heard me mention was a local policy that changed in July of 2017, a local policy that has not changed to reflect an actual policy in our handbook, to remove corporal punishment from the student code of conduct. I really look forward to this policy amendment, because I really want to close the door on the dark period of our district's history that includes corporal punishment. I really know Reverend Irvin would probably appreciate me not talking about Nacogdoches ISD's history of hitting kids. You know, and as we looked at the proposed budgets on Tuesday at the board workshop, I was reminded of some unfinished board business from last fiscal year that, as far as I know, could be adding to the stress and the burden of our 2018-19 budget. In March of last year, we entered into an agreement, Nacogdoches ISD, with the City of Nacogdoches to paint a logo on a water tower. And that project was proposed to be paid for through fundraising. Now, right now, my daughter is at Mike Moses Middle School, and she's one of the girls selling coupon books to help replace gym clothes with holes and to help purchase equipment for the PE program. But, I hate to think that she is out campaigning against a board member to raise money for our schools. You know, if that outstanding debt has already been paid, we haven't heard about it as a community. And if it, if it's still out there, we've got to just get that off the books. We're moving into another fiscal year. It's a fresh board. It's a new day at Nacogdoches ISD. That said, I really want to let you know that I've been encouraged by attempts at financial transparency in recent days, in recent weeks, in recent months. And it's great to have access to the check register prior to board meetings. It's great to have access to what's happening. And as an engaged member of our community, I liked being at the board workshop, and I hope that we continue that in the future. I also hope that you continue to include the community as you seek to rebuild bridges and look for additional support for Nacogdoches, because whatever the past has been, right now, the future is spotless. And I really hope it shines for Nacogdoches. Thank you.
All right, we move now to the consent agenda. Unless removed from the agenda, all items will be acted on with one motion. Is there any board member who wishes to discuss, discuss an item on the consent agenda separately? Please indicate the agenda matter, and it will be set aside for further discussion and a separate vote.
Mr. President, 7D.
Okay, we will now, chair will entertain a motion on the consent agenda, all except 7D.
President.
Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda except for 7D.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor will show by the usual sign of voting. unanimous motion carried. Mr. Smith, 7D.
Yes, Mr. President. The 7D is second reading of revised local policy FNCE, student conduct, personal, telecommunications, electronic devices. And I just, and passed this along earlier, I don't know if it went all the way through, but the last sentence of the new proposal says that the district prohibits unauthorized audio or visual recordings or transmission of audio or images of other students. And I know that is the case, and there's times where parents have to give permission for that thing. And for those types of occasions, the problem I saw with that sentence that I was wanting to raise to the attention of the board this evening is, to me, someone can use that and say a parent might not can take a picture or video of their child in a basketball game or a cheerleading event if it happens to get other students in the picture. And I would assume that's not what the administration was intending by revising the policy. But, I wouldn't want some of the folks out there that really enjoy trying to pick on things to kind of bring that out and then say, all of a sudden, parents can't go in and video or photograph the kids in an athletic event. So, my proposal, the rest of it is, my proposal would be to make a motion to approve 7D with the last sentence being stricken.
I'll second that.
Hold on, Mr. President. Go ahead. I was going to say, give me, give me to the policy so I can, what 7D is under.
Page 140.
It is, it is.
It's page 140. My question here is, is how much of this is coming down from TASB policy, state law versus, I mean, how much, how much leeway do we have to change that locally? I believe Kelly's already left.
Yes, Mr. Corteski has left. This language all came from TASB. But, we did consult with Ms. Corteski before she left, and her opinion was that she saw no issue with removing that last sentence, because she felt as if it did conflict or could conflict with other issues, as Mr. Smith has brought up.
Okay.
The only concern I have, and I'm found with recommendation, is we have a habit of folks posting things on social media of other children and activities. And so, we may need to come back and look at better language that's, that's more clear, because with this language being removed, it's almost like permission. But, I see your point. This is not intended to prohibit a parent from supporting their students and requiring them at all. Very good catch.
So, is the recommendation to pull it for further discussions, to further discussion? Mr. Fraley?
Yes, sir. And I think, I think we'll just note that administratively versus you taking action on it. If that's okay?
Okay.
Maybe fine.
Thank you. Good catch. Thanks, sir.
Good. So, do we go on with the second meeting, or just?
You've approved the other ones on second reading, but this one has to come back separately.
Okay.
For second reading. So, do it another time. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Good catch.
We go now to the action agenda. Consideration of an action on personnel items. Do we have any motion with Code Five?
Yes, I move to approve administration's recommendation for the contract renewals of the teacher, other professional-certified, full-time contract employees as a state.
Second.
Moved by Code Five, second by Mr. Mataria. Is there any discussion? All in favor will show by the usual sign of voting. And the vote is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Mataria.
Mr. President, I move to approve administration's recommendations for one-year administrator contracts as presented.
Second motion.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Mataria, second. And Mr. Neal, any discussion? All in favor will show by the usual sign of voting. Vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. All right. Consideration of the 2018-2019 compensation plan. Mr. Martin.
Good evening, President Irvin, board members, interim superintendent, Mr. Fraley. It is a pleasure tonight to present the 2018-19 proposed compensation plan. There are no changes to the plan since our board budget workshop on Tuesday night, with the exception of page 11. And at your places, you have a document with a pink tab. You'll take a look at that. The one minor change is that we added elementary principals back to pay grade 5.
Pay those guys?
Right, yes. I'm sure they're going to be happy about that. But, that is the only change since Tuesday night that we've made to the draft proposed plan. Administration recommends a 2% flat raise for all employees across the board. And administration recommends that the board approve the proposed compensation plan.
Mr. President, I can add.
Yes.
And also, as we're further developing the budget, should we need to make any other council modifications? We'll do so and bring that to you for your approval at that time.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move that board approve the 2018-2019 compensation plan as presented.
My second.
It's been moved by Ms. Neal, second by Ms. Fish. Pitch is, are there any discussions? Any discussions? If not, all in favor will show by the usual sign of voting. Vote is unanimous. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Mr. Martin. Okay, we come now to Ms. Thacker. Approval of community eligibility program.
Good evening, President Irvin, board members, and interim superintendent Fraley. Last month, I brought to your attention the possibility of, to feed all of our students free breakfast and free lunch as part of the community eligibility provision provided by USDA. And it's my recommendation to, that you would approve that, so we could move forward with that for next year. And I would like to entertain any questions that you would like to ask at this time.
I just wanted to ask, I know that the last presentation that you gave is you were talking about the application process and trying to make it as simple as possible. Has that been worked out in terms?
I believe it has, yes, sir. We still have a little bit, little more tweaking to do with it, but that's a procedure that we'll have in place, I promise. So does Mr. Martin.
Well, I think it's a very good plan. Happy to see all our kids will get to eat and not have to sit and watch other kids eat, not be able to eat. So, I'm happy with that.
Well, for the record, no child gets to have to watch it. We actually feed every child now. We just do it at a big ticket.
You know, the newspaper ran an article on it, so I got a lot of public people talking to me about it. And I got, I didn't get any negatives. I got, I got all positives. I don't know about y'all.
Had a few negatives, believe me, though. Interesting. But, I would make a motion that the board approve implementation of the community eligibility provision that will allow all students of Nacogdoches ISD to receive a breakfast and lunch free of charge.
I will second that.
It was moved by Ms. Fitch and seconded by Ms. Mataria. Is there any discussion? Those in favor will show by the usual sign of voting. Vote is unanimous. The motion is carried.
Thank you very much for all that you do for this, for our great students.
You as well.
Thank you. Okay, the last thing on our agenda is to set a date to canvas the May 5 election returns. What are our options?
The options are Tuesday, May 8. However, we can do a short meeting. There's a meeting at 6:30. We can do Friday, May 11, or Monday, May 14. We have a few conflicts on the Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we schedule the canvassing for 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May the 8th.
It's moved by Ms. Fitch, seconded by Mr. Mataria. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, usual sign of voting. I will abstain. Motion carried. Thank you.
I only abstained.
Mr. President, that was the 6:00 PM?
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM.
On May the 8th.
I should not believe Mr. Neal.
You've been late. We've been late.
Mr. President, I move for adjournment. Mr. President, I move for adjournment.